I should, I should be okay, yeah.
It being six thirty on Monday, March eleventh at two thousand twenty-four, I hereby call the meeting of the Gardner School Committee to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Uh, Ms. Rachel Cormier is absent tonight. Ms. Hurst?
Present.
Mr. LaFreniere?
Present.
Mrs. Layton?
Present.
Mrs. Plauman?
Present.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
And Dr. Bellagreeno?
Present.
Oh, the student rep is not present. Otherwise, everyone is present.
Thank you very much. Please rise with pleasure, allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on the agenda is open time for the general public. Is there anyone here from the general public who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, moving on to recognitions by the superintendent, Dr. Bellagreeno.
There, there are actually no recognitions tonight.
All right, moving on. Uh, to item D, the consent agenda, this is included in your packet. Uh, is there a motion on the floor regarding the consent agenda?
Move to accept.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Ward Layton, seconded by Mr. LaFreniere. Uh, all, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item E, subcommittee reports, beginning with the facilities subcommittee. Mr. Schwartz.
We met on Thursday, March seventh. We reviewed the Maintenance Department's project list. We find that the rehab of Landry Auditorium at the high school is slowly going on, but progressing. The big Maintenance Department has lined up contractors for the HVAC system and the electrical systems. During the summer break, the ceiling tiles will be replaced in the kitchen of the high school. And they're looking also to replace the dishwasher. I believe those things wear out. The kitchen hood needs upgrading, uh, to code and compliance. And this summer, we'll be replacing asbestos tiles in the office as well as some carpeting. At middle school, they need to upgrade the generator and the attached fuel systems. And there's an in-ground fuel tank as well as a, a day tank. The day tank is located underneath the generator. But the main eight hundred gallon fuel tank is in ground. Seems to have contaminated fuel, so that has to be addressed during the summer. The fire sprinkler system needs upgrading. And I said, wow, is it time? And yeah, we're twenty-five, twenty-six years old. The sprinkler heads, they have a li- time limit on them and they need to be changed. There's a valve that needs replacement. And there's a small leak that's not a major concern right now. And somewhere down the line, we're, down the line, we'll replace the front doors and the walk-off grill. And I thought, what's the walk-off grill? Well, that's the pad. As soon as you open doors, you step in and it, you kind of sink a little bit, but that's a walk-off pad. And what happens is all the sand from your shoes and everything fall down underneath the pad. We're replacing the parking lot lighting system sometime. And we're repairing, uh, the gym divider. Right now, it's inoperable. There's a broken chain that assists the motor to open the drive. Hopefully, we'll repair and paint the divider, divider, and possibly even the gym sometime during the year. On Elm Street School, and we'll, sometime, we're gonna relocate the, the walk-in freezer. And I think we're gonna locate it at the middle school. Too good to throw away, not being used, so we can put it to good use at the middle school. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, is there any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, moving on to the finance subcommittee. Ms. LaFreniere.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The, uh, finance subcommittee met on, uh, March seventh. The committee reviewed the expense report. General ca- questions were asked and answered about various line items. Uh, Mr. Schwartz noted some negatives and, and, uh, some line, line items, and Mr. Hawke assured him, uh, the adequate funds remained to cover those negatives. Uh, the committee reviewed the preliminary FY twenty-five budget. The budget sheets showed many, uh, expense reductions due to a few factors. Chapter seventy, uh, receipts were less than expected and special education costs were fi- far higher than anticipated. Um, the budget still showed a negative balance. Questions regarding the FY twenty-five budget, uh, were asked and answered, and Mr. Hawke stated that the, uh, next meeting, uh, the budget should be finalized and ready for public, uh, comment in school committee vote. And that was it.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, is there any questions, comments, concerns on the report from the finance subcommittee?
Just, just one question for John. You might wanna consider his next finance. At the top of the minutes, it says Wednesday, January twenty-fourth.
Yes, I saw that. That's why, took me a second to remember what the date was that we met. He did have the wrong date on the top.
All right.
Ye- yes.
Uh, next, we have the policy subcommittee. Ms. Hurst, if you want to, since there's no student advisory board update, you can take items three, four, nine, nine, and three, five, zero, zero out of order, if that helps you with your report as well.
Um, okay. So, we met on, uh, Valentine's Day, February fourteenth. And, um, so tonight, we have four policies for first read, five for second reading, and two for adoption. Do you want me to just continue?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So, the four for first read is IHBG home education, IJOA field trips, IJOC, school volunteers, and ILD, student submission to educational survey and research.
Is there one more?
Oh, and JICFB bullying. So that means that there was five. I didn't see that one.
So those are in the packet for information for first read for this week?
Those are in the packet for information. Um, then, we have, um, we have two for adoption. So I would like to make a motion to adopt HA negotiations goals and HF school committee negotiating agents.
Is there a second? Motion made by Ms. Hurst, seconded by Attorney Plauman to adopt after second reading, uh, policy HA negotiation goals and HF school committee negotiating agents. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Ms. Hurst.
Okay. Then we have, um, policies for HB negotiations, IC, ICA, uh, school year, school calendar, IGA, IGD, curriculum development and, and adoption, IHAMA, parental notification relative to sex education, IHBG dash E, notice of intent to pursue a program of home education. I make a motion to, um, accept these as presented in the packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hurst, seconded by Ms. Ward Layton to adopt the, uh, adopt the aforementioned policies of HB negotiations legal status, IC, ICA, school year, school calendar, IGA, IGD, curriculum development and adoption, IHAMA, parental notification relative to sex education, and IHBG slash E, notice of intent to pursue program of home education. Uh, the difference from this is that it's amending an existing policy where the other ones were new policies on the book. That's why they had to be made into separate motions. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Going back up to program of studies, there's a vote required on this one. Item number three, four, nine, five.
No. Just a quick note, Paula Bulger wanted to be here, but she's at the, um, well, she actually wanted to be at the early college thing, but, um, because we're just, we're thrilled about the program, but she's up at a, a mandatory parent night tonight. However, she said, if we have questions, I can call her and have any questions answered if necessary.
Move to accept the program of studies.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Plauman, seconded by Ms. LaFreniere to adopt the program of studies as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Next item, item number three, four, nine, six, Student Opportunity Act. Dr. Bellagreeno.
Yes, thank you. Um, so, my apologies for having to do this so quickly. Um, it was, um, late January when Desi let us know that they would be rolling this out and they would be giving us plenty of time. Um, in, uh, second week of February is when we got the materials. Um, we typically do a ga- like a public gathering, so we did have a convening of, um, parents and staff. Um, uh, and folks, um, folks came. Several of you were there too. Thank you for coming, um, giving input into what the SOA plan would be. Just a reminder, this is, um, although this plan, we, we have an, um, an increase right now, um, it's not finalized, but of two point eight million dollars. And that's, um, due to the Student Opportunity Act, which is larger than we used to get in the past, most definitely. However, at this point, um, it's also taking over for ESAR. So, we were very fortunate, again, you know, um, I give a lot of credit to Representative Lotnick for working with, very closely with us, figuring out where our number should be, um, uh, to make sure that we don't have a cliff this year. Um, and so, we're very fortunate we don't have a cliff. Uh, but with that SOA money, what we're, what we're not doing is saying, oh, we're doing all these new things. What we're supposed to do is take the information from, um, from the convening and the information that we gathered and make sure that that is, um, what our plan is going forward, because our money should be supporting the education that we're designing, not the other way around. So we, um, right now, uh, we have two goals. One is empty, uh, this should be no shock at anyone in this room. Multitiere system of supports, um, for social, emotional learning and multitiere system of supports for academics. Everything that we're doing falls under those two umbrellas. And the SOA plan, you'll see, it's millions of dollars. The amount is over the next three years, um, for the cost. And it's almost all for things that we're currently doing. Um, some of the things, we are purchasing some new, um, uh, curricula. Um, but for the most part, it's positions that we already have supporting the system that we have and, um, making sure it keeps moving forward. Are there any questions on the plan itself?
I don't have any questions on the plan, but what was interesting to me is that we were split up into different groups. But each group, when they hung up the papers, where people had taken notes, they were pretty much the same. So it was like you had three different schools, three different groups of people, all going for the same thing. So, it was just really good to, to see that and have everybody like on the same page.
It, it should be very validating for us, because quite frankly, it's aligned perfectly with the plan that we have, um, for our district improvement plan. Which the district improvement plan, the difference between that and the SOA is that the district improvement plan is all encompassing of everything we do. The Student Opportunity Act is specific to evidence-based practices, and we're doing a lot of those evidence-based practices. So it, it's actually was pretty easy to write. It was a little cumbersome. Um, and unfortunately, it's due April first at eleven fifty-nine. Um, and it ha- and it has to be voted on by school committee. So we had to have the vote, um, tonight. But thanks for that. Keep back.
Move to accept the plan as presented.
Second.
Attorney Plauman, seconded by Ms. LaFreniere to adopt the Student Opportunity Act plan as presented in the packet. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just that the report was awesome. It was, it was really detailed and really awesome. So thank you for pulling it together so fast.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Second.
It's already been made in second, so just any of the discussions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Unless there's objection, we'll hold off on item number three, four, nine, seven, and three, four, nine, eight for a little bit. And we'll jump ahead to three, five, oh, one, curriculum coordi- curriculum coordinator update. Uh, this was included in your packet for information. Is there any questions, comments, concerns on that update?
I think you have the old agenda.
Yes, you do.
We updated.
Yeah, it was updated.
Which one?
The next one should be the field trip for you.
Yes.
Four, nine, seven.
Don't have the field trip on my.
Right, that was added in today.
Yes, okay, thank you. So next item is item number three, four, nine, seven, the field trip for the GDS third grade class on May twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and June fourth, June seventh, twenty twenty-four, to the Stonewall Farm, Keene, New Hampshire.
These are different classes going at different times. Um, and it's just over the border, um, but we wanted to make sure that we're following school committee policy.
Move to make motion to approve the field trip. I'll second that.
Uh, motion made by Ms. LaFreniere, seconded by Mrs. Hurst to approve the field trip. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Now, moving forward to item number three, five, oh, one, the curriculum coordinator update.
Oh, it's Stonewall, too.
Oh, two, that's right. I've got the new numbers now. Three, five, oh, two, curriculum coordinators update. This was included in your packet for more information. Uh, is there any discussion, questions, comments, concerns on that update? Thank you very much, Dr. Gogan. Item number three, five, oh, three, grant administrators update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to item number three, five, oh, four, special education update. This was included in your packet for information. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Item number three, five, oh, five, special education parents advisory council update. Ms. Hurst.
Yeah. Um, the CPAC, they, um, they held a meeting on February twenty-first, um, and they presented on what the CPAC is. Um, they had a special election that was also held that night, and the co-chair seat was filled by Katie Donovan. Uh, they're continuing to focus on increasing parent engagement, and they're gonna be meeting with the family engagement specialist next Thursday. Um, next week, uh, on March twenty-first will be the annual basic rights workshop, and it will be presented by Joyce West. The flyer will be provided at, at some point this week or early next week. And they're working on, um, the language barrier and have reached out to Lori Simpson.
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on that?
Just a lot of good things going on, and they have the chair, the vice chair, and a secretary now, and, yeah.
All right. Are there any questions, comments, concerns on that item? All right, the, uh, uh, the committee will be in a brief reset. Uh, we will reconvene at six fifty. Uh, the next items on our agenda. Thank you.
So, we've made a lot of progress on registering students before the summer for kindergarten, which had been a struggle in the past. We've really done a lot. We, we pretty much get almost all our kindergarteners registered before the summer. So our hope is while we're getting them all registered, we also s- give them a screening. The only way we could do that from a staffing perspective is to have them come at the very end of the year and actually end preschool and kindergarten two and a half days early. We usually do that for preschool. Uh, but to have all the, to avail ourselves, all the kindergarten staff and all the preschool staff to be able to do it, uh, we came up with this plan. So will be a change in our schedule. We will, of course, inform all the families. We'll give them, uh, the reasoning. Uh, but we, and kindergarten's not mandatory, so it does need to go through the formal process, uh, through school committee, but we wanted to, uh, make sure we informed you of our why and what we're doing. We will then, um, do, the other other change will be next year, we'll be doing our orientations. Instead of doing it, you know, when all our other students are in the building, we're actually gonna do it during the professional development time, uh, the prior week. So it just, logistically, it helps us out a lot. And this is a, a, a great example of why the superintendent should have done the, um, uh, the slideshow piece, but that's okay. We'll go with it. No, it's, um, our My School Improvement Plan, like the district school improvement plan, is heavily centered on the, uh, multitiere systems of support. It's our process. It's embedded in everything we do. Uh, and a lot of My School Improvement Plan outcomes centered around merging our systems uh, between the, the two schools that are now one. And so, uh, those, the two, uh, major systems that we merge are, as you can see on the right, the B, our social, emotional, and behavioral systems. And then, of course, our academic systems on the left. Uh, we've made, um, tremendous progress as, uh, from a system's perspective, but also in terms of results, using our MTSS, uh, processes and fine tuning it, um, and doing a lot of things on that, that behavioral side. And we're still trying to, um, uh, really get down our processes around and systems around the academic side. Uh, but we're making a lot of progress on that. And, and the way I, the, our school very simply defines MTSS, I know we've talked about it. I know Marcus talked about it, um, quite a bit. But it's basically getting kids what they need to succeed. Um, it, and one of the ways we do that is we look at data. We try to be not only responsive, but proactive with that data. Um, and we very much look at equity, which is some kids need more than other kids. And our data and our systems help us identify that and give the interventions that the kids need. Uh, whether they're reading, whether they're, it's they're struggling, um, to learn certain social skills. So I put in here, um, you know, uh, we had four strategic objectives. Strategic objective one and three centered around, um, our, our school, uh, vision, which was, uh, that all community members would experience joy, achievement, and care, um, and again, through MTSS. Uh, but the, this, uh, one and three center around achievement as it pertains to social, emotional, and behavioral skills. Um, and so, one of the, it's difficult a little bit for the joy piece to, to really look at data, but we did, we do have, um, data points that we look at, one of which is our, our school survey. We look at kids and, uh, their enjoyment at school um, and, and how they treat each other at school. And one of the areas that was a little lower than some of the, um, uh, others was how kids treat each other. Um, and so when our upper level grade students, we obviously, you know, it's a little tougher with kindergartners to take the survey, but our upper grade students do take the survey. And that was one area that we wanted to focus on. So a great exam, is a great example of how we use our MTSS systems. We looked at the survey, identified that kind, our school values of safe, respectful, responsible, and kind. Um, we still need to really work on that kind feature. So we had a, uh, a kindness rally. You could see there at the bottom. We had a kindness spirit week, um, the last day being the rally, which was a kind of su- just like a superhero day. I'm captain administrator. You can see in the orange. You can see that there. Uh, and then my Friday message that week centered around, that I sent the kids a video, YouTube video, uh, with their school puppet, Daryl, there, around kindness and how kids can treat each other kindly. Uh, one of the other data points we looked at, um, and we created as part of this school improvement plan and our MTSS system was just a survey for kids that teachers would help our younger students administer. Our goal, our outcome in our student, school improvement plan was that ninety percent of our students would enjoy coming to school, uh, which we felt really tied into that joy element. Um, and we came close, um, you know, uh, eighty-eight point, uh, six um, said they always or sometimes enjoy coming to school. Um, you know, we obviously love it to all be in the yellow, always enjoy coming to school. But, um, this was last May. We're gonna do it again, um, this upcoming May as well. Now, part of the MTSS systems, as you know, is, uh, our tier one, our universal intervention, what we do for all kids to help them learn our, um, uh, our school values and our expected behaviors. So, um, again, this is still the behavioral part of that MTSS, uh, triangle. So, we do a couple of things. We have a PADS curriculum, which is what we use to teach all kids social, emotional, and behavioral skills. Uh, we also use our PBIS system, um, to teach. And you could see there, um, that is our hallway expectations, um, for being safe, respectful, responsible, and kind. That's not just a, a banner that we put up there. It's not just something that's in the teacher's desk drawer. This is something that the teachers actually teach. We do fidelity checks to see how well it's going. And then we also send out reminders periodically, um, for them to reteach some of these skills. You know, so for example, some of the students, uh, forget and struggle when they come back from vacation after different expectations at home. So the teachers will teach these things. It's for everyone. That's what tier one is. And then they reward those who do do it and do it well through, um, Dojo Points, which is an app where every kid is on, um, and every time they meet one of our expected beha- not every time, but it's, it's, it's used to kind of emphasize our expected behaviors. Um, and again, this is, this, this data piece right here, we collect and look at our Dojo Points throughout the school. We look at different teachers, um, how they're administering them. And, uh, this is part of our MTSS meetings. So it's, it's, it's something we're always working on refining and, and looking at. And then this was, um, you know, a source of pride. I put up strategic objective three. Again, we're looking at a lot of the objectives centered and then outcomes centered around, uh, creating the processes for the school, the new school, and the, and merging the old schools. Um, our numbers this year, this is office discipline referrals. So great indicator how well kids are learning the behavior we expect for them. Um, and the blue is this year. Now, it does look a little higher than the green last year. Um, and this is because this, and again, this came out of our MTSS, looking at data, trying to be proactive. Uh, we inserted bus referrals this year, and we inserted, uh, behavior referrals for our sub-separate system. Um, so that's why it's higher, but you'll notice each month it's gone down. So our interventions that we implement after we look at the data and see what we can do better is, is yielding some, uh, fruit. So it's, it's benefiting, uh, the kids and their behaviors, so. Now, our major tier two intervention, one of our tier two interventions is small, um, counseling groups, uh, to, again, help teach some of this, our students who are struggling with behavior. groups, to again, help teach some of this, our students who are struggling with behavior tier two, they need a little more support. So that's one of the things we do, but our other major intervention is called check-in, check-out. It's based on research that says kids, when they have a connection with at least one adult, it, it really helps them socially, emotionally, behaviorally at, at a school. So, that report's a little confusing, it's, it really is, though, each line represents all the kids that are on our check-in, check-out program, and what they do is they meet with their trusted adult every morning, they set a goal for each class period during the day around safe, respectful, responsible, and kind, it's actually a number goal. And then we, at the end of the day, they check in with their trusted adult and say, hey, did you, did you meet your goal? And they have a conversation around that, to again, help teach those skills. And we were really happy that 65% were making progress. And you can see that little slash, that means they met 80% of their goal, and that's what the progress is, if you're meeting 80, on average, meeting 80% of your goal. And so, most of them, you can see, are above that, those slashes are above that 80% marker. And this is just an example of some of the data, we look at our MTSS meetings, which again, happen every week, one week, we meet for, look at tier one data, develop problem statements and ways we're going to help our students tier, in, in tier one interventions. The next week is tier two, and the following week is tier three. This is just an example from one of the spreadsheet data items we looked at in our tier three meeting, and it's kids who are on, again, tier three, they need more support. They still need their, all their tier one interventions, all their universal supports, they may also need tier two supports, but in some cases, they need what's, you see if there's BSP, it's just a behavior support plan, they need really targeted help to, to achieve their behavior and social, emotional goals. And even though the number, the percentage, it's a very fluid thing, don't always show growth, that orange circle number 14, that is a real source of pride for us, because at a school of 1,080 students, only 14 require a behavior support plan, which is, it's really fits in with that, 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 that if your MTSS system's working, it should be 1% to 5% of your population, so that, that, that was really positive for us. And speaking of, this was data that we're very proud of, it was just presented last week in Chicago. On the left is just the standard, if you're doing your MTSS systems right, this is what it should look like, only 1% to 5% of your kids should be in the red, they should only need that amount of, of intensive supports, 15% should be in the yellow, and then 80% should only need tier one and no tier two or tier three. And that triangle report to the right is our discipline referral data, the red is kids who have registered six or more referrals for the year, and it's, it was only 38 students, which is 3.5% of our population. So, you can see, our triangle really is a source of pride, because it means our MTSS systems around behavior is really, is really doing well.
Just a note, presented in Chicago means that it was presented at a international conference on PBIS, so our results were quite frankly shown around the world.
And MTSS and our interventions only good if, if they're done with fidelity, because if they're not done with fidelity, that triangle will look different. And, you know, you might get frustrated, why are our interventions not working? Well, we aren't doing them right. So we do, part of our, the school improvement plan centers around fidelity and making sure we're implementing things with fidelity. And so you can see, and we have outside consultants coming to actually monitor some of our fidelity systems, or the fidelity of some of our systems, and it's, I know it's small, but tier, the figure on the left is tier three, we were, I think it's 93%, and then the tier one and tier two graph on the right, the orange circle, is, yeah, 90, 93 and 92%. So in my school improvement plan, one of the outcomes was that our fidelity would be 90% or higher, so I'm really proud that this is our concluding year, and this was one area that showed our, those systems are happening and they're happening well.
Yeah, and so this is 2000, no, 2021, 2022, 2023.
Yeah, thank you, that green is where we're currently at, so you can see, we had a long way to go, and we've, we've made some great progress. And so the other big piece, obviously, is academic, and we, we are, and we've been working really hard at mimicking some of our great success around our MTSS processes with behavior, and trying to move it to our academic areas. Our big goal in elementary schools centers around reading, I've talked to you folks about why that's so important, we set a goal of 85%, although at this point, I had a goal, a very ambitious goal of 90, 95% reading at our near proficiency, which I'm still optimistic we'll get to, because we do have some things that we're still feel we can grow in. But I was very proud, you can see that blue bars this year, the first bar in each of those rows represents the fall reading benchmark, and then the second bar represents for each grade, and the, the school one is just, it's, it's the same, but you can see the growth in, every grade had, had significant growth in kids' reading ability for, based on the DIBELS benchmark, which is our reading benchmark. And then Mark, if you want to.
Great, so this is the first one? This, this was, the top one was earlier in the year, and then the second one? Yeah, and so this is like this month?
Yeah, BOY is beginning of year, middle of year, so we're doing, and we progress, part, part of our MTSS process, we progress monitor that teachers assess kids in different skills on reading every two weeks, and we enter that data, we look at that data, we do tier two and tier three interventions based on that data to really get the kids as far along as we can, because we know that by second grade, if kids aren't reading at our near benchmark, it's, they won't have, it'll, it could affect their, their school trajectory and academic trajectory, but also their life trajectory. So, again, we still hold out hope for 85% reading at our near, and we were particularly proud, last year, that bottom row, we were at 73%, again, not where we want to be, but when you look at where we came from in 2019, which is again, before COVID, before COVID we were at 64%, so we've had over the, even through COVID, even though our third and fourth graders, you know, had to deal with learning to read through, during COVID, we're still, our intervention systems is still showing growth and better. And, and right now, this year, we're two whole percentage points ahead of where we were at the mid-year mark last year, so still ways to grow, but definitely strong growth. So strategic objective two, again, really centers around academics, and part of that is monitoring the quality of our tier one instructional practices, because we know, and you know, I know Mark preaches this all the time, teaching causes learning, so we want to look at our teaching practices and make sure every kid is getting quality tier one instruction. The blue is what we do, kind of sweeps, and this graph pertains to what we call our CSS process, our curriculum support system, we have people go in and actually, they go through training on how to observe instruction and monitor how well we're doing in certain areas. And so, one of the biggest ones is that, one of the, you can see an OTR there, and that me, just means opportunities to respond, so a lot of you, when you were in class, you remember your teacher, you know, calling one at a time, you know, oh, Mr. Schwartz, you know, I see you have your hand raised, why don't you share your answer? All the other kids are just sitting passively, and they may look like they're paying attention, but we don't know if they are. So, that OTR is really been a big focus in terms of, hey, when I ask a question, instead of just calling out, I'm Mr. Schwartz, every kid has an opportunity to respond, whether that's talking to their neighbor, the teacher goes around and monitors that, whether that's having them hold up a whiteboard, showing their math answer, and saying, okay, I can see who has it and who doesn't. So that's been a big focus. Our first three grouping categories, obviously, we're not at our red, which is the goal, that's the goal, but the first one is, is instruction happening over 90% of the, the class time, so focusing on less transitions, less downtime, and so we still have some growth there, but, and then the, the middle two bars, the praise and the correction, we're really striving on a research-based practice that says that teachers praise kids five to one, a five-to-one praise to correction ratio, so every time you have to correct a kid, it's hopefully preceded by five positive statements, it's shown to really help kids academically as well, so we're focused on the end behavior. And here's just another, our coaches do sweeps, again, quality instructional practices, all those things on the red, you can see that OTR, but as well as some other elements, we have, we're fortunate to have sometimes multiple staff in a room, are they teaching the whole time, are they both involved in helping kids the whole time, so that's that two plus adults. And you can see from October, those percentages to the sweep we did in January did grow for this particular sweep of 34 classrooms, so, yeah, it was pretty good.
So we do have coaches who go in, so not only do we hold teachers accountable, we have training. Each building has coach, coaches that go into a, go into a teacher's classroom, make observations, and then provide that feedback, which is not part of the evaluation process, it just gives folks feedback on how they praise their correction ratio is, whether or not there were opportunities to respond, and that way they're getting the professional development, because that to us is the best form of professional development, it's giving, it's very individualized, and it's very specific in terms of what they need to do to take the next steps.
And, and so we're looking, obviously, MCAS and some of the goals we set in there centered around growth, and we have made growth in, in our MCAS scores, but one of the ways that we really look at how we're doing year to year is through our Lincoln benchmark assessments, which tie very well to, to MCAS and how, how we'll do on that. So, the item on the left, I just pulled a sample graph, so the item on the left is the fall benchmark for math, the item on the right in fourth grade is the fourth grade benchmark in mid-year, and, but based on all the math benchmarks for the whole school, we grew 11.75%. So, each, each, we're obviously wanting that growth as high as possible to hopefully do well and achieve on MCAS, but this is just an example of some of that growth. Then the next one is BLA, not as, not as robust as the math growth, but growth nonetheless. And then one of the other areas that we've really focused on this year, we always focus it, but even more so this year, if kids aren't in school, they can't learn. So, this attendance has been a big emphasis, and we've been really monitoring it, looking at a lot of different metrics, and you can see that our numbers this year have improved quite a bit from last year for the same month. And the last strategic objective centers around collaborating with families, creating a joyful school community, we chat with business partners. This is our strategic objective, I feel like still has the most, even though we did do a lot of things, we have a more robust PTO, we've merged the PTOs for the two schools, we've merged the parent input councils for both schools, they, we're still, I just went with the parent input council a week ago, and we still are looking to recruit more families to be more involved in not only, you know, fun activities, but also decision-making. So the next slide just shows some of the, the, you know, the PTO has been great in terms of really helping us to fund and, and organize different events, you can see there's a kindergarten dance part, kindergarten preschool dance party we're having. And then one of the things that we talked about academically is, is some of the parents were saying, you know, different teachers communicate different things and have different, you know, methods of doing it, and so, you know, a couple of months ago, the parent input council said we really like that information to be uniformed, so each grade now collectively creates a newsletter home that has certain elements, and it's uniform for each grade. And even though it looks different, so the one on the left is a second grade sample of a newsletter, and the one on the right is a third grade, they both have the same elements, including what can families do at home to help their kids academically. And so that is, that's kind of an update on our school improvement plan, which will be redone starting next year.
Are there any questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Martin?
You should be proud of everything that's happened.
Thank you, appreciate that, thank you. Yeah, it's, it's some good, yeah.
Throw, when you, in a question, when you only have one or two students that readily answer questions from the teacher, does he or she check the O's? I think you did say that.
Yeah, yeah, that's the hope with giving more opportunities to respond, is that there's that.
Is it a reluctance or a shyness?
Sometimes, and that's why we want to give kids different ways to communicate, that could be through a whiteboard and showing their answer, and, and monitoring it that way, it might be, they, instead of talking in front of the whole group and raising their hand in front of a whole group, and we all know, even as adults, when I run professional development with adults and I'm staring out at 180 staff, you know, very few will raise their hand and participate, so, you know, the teachers are really skilled that, you know, hey, think quietly yourself, and talk to a partner, and/or share with the group, and then we'll share out. And so that's a way too, when they're talking with their partner, they're talking with their group, the staff in the room will run and monitor, see if they, they, they kind of picking up what they're throwing down and understand, so. Yeah, yeah, sure.
I love your much longer reports too, boy.
Oh, thanks.
I read it, I do read it.
Oh, I appreciate that, yeah, no, I, I, I tie right to our school improvement plan, I always progress towards that school improvement plan and those objectives, so, thank you.
Any, any other questions, comments, concerns from the members of the committee?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that, as someone who's been advocating for this kind of stuff for many, many years, and inclusion, that I am just so grateful to see this come into fruition. Thank you so much for everything you're doing.
Yeah, it's a problem, I appreciate it.
You said DIBELS, and I heard DBQs in my head for a second.
I tell you, my son's about there.
Really?
Maybe he was history starting, I think, next year.
They love DBQs.
Yeah, yeah, so he'll be doing those.
All right, if there's no more, Mr. Schwartz?
One more question, you talked about kids learning to like each other or get along with each other, and you find this sort of a downtrodden in between school breaks, is it, that's probably because of change in a, a family environment, right, as opposed to an academic environment?
Yeah, absolutely, that's what we noticed based on the data, that some of our highest office discipline referrals are, you know, the day after daylight savings times, which are, you know, you know, something that affected their behavior today.
That was my behavior, I apologize.
But after-school vacations as well, and we, you know, we look at, sometimes it's puzzling, like Wednesday is our highest day for discipline referrals, and you would think the weekend, again, coming from a home environment, which might be a wonderful, loving, caring environment, but very few academic demands being placed to academic demands, you would think Monday and Tuesday would be the toughest, but for whatever reason, I don't know if it's that run out of steam by Wednesday, and that's when it hits, but also right after-school vacations, because again, it's, it's, there's, the home and school is just different demands, it's different.
Unstructured time versus structured time.
Unstructured versus structured, peer relationships, it's one of the biggest skill deficits understandably that young kids have, they don't, they're learning still how to interact with their peers, you know, and so it's, it's incumbent on us to help teach that and partner with families in teaching that, but it's, it's something that, you know, we have, the data shows that they do sometimes struggle to come back from that, those breaks, different environment.
Just a lot of growing up.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, sure.
If there's no other questions, comments, concerns, we'll move on to item number three, four, nine, eight, kindergarten, 2024, 2025. Dr. Pillman?
Actually, kindergarten, was that the thing that he talked about? So that information was presented earlier in the presentation.
Any questions, comments, concerns on the change in the kindergarten schedule? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Martin. Moving on to item H, communications from the superintendent.
First off, I just wanted to thank you all, and I really wanted to thank our staff and administrators for their, you know, hard work while AIR, the consulting company, came in from Desi, you know, a lot of good inform, got a lot of good information's probably going to come from that, but I have to say, you know, our staff handle themselves very professionally and very well, so I'm very proud to be working for this district. So, and that's all I have to say for today.
All right, item I, final comment to the school committee, Mrs. Wordley.
Um, I, it's, I know it's busy, a lot of things are going on, I know we have cheerleaders at states right now, I know sports are underway, but I wanted to just give some kudos to the, the theater and the music department right now, we've, I think that we're in our second out of three weekends where there was musicals, this past week was Winnie the Pooh, it was adorable, um, it was wild on Thursday night, but it was adorable, and they were great. High school's doing Year in Town this weekend, the name, Don't Let the Name Turn You Off, it's a really funny musical about having to pay to go to the bathroom, and it's, it's really funny, and then the middle school's going to do And then the middle school's going to do Shrek Jr. the weekend of the 22nd and 23rd. So if you get a chance to get out there, the kids are just awesome to see. And just, it's March in schools, just keep on keeping on, folks. We can do it. Take care.
Mrs. Hurst.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mrs. Pellet.
I think I saw today that Dan Fort had posted that there were 200 kids, we're going to talk about that. I think there were 200 kids that had participated in the winter sports season in some form, and then he had a whole list of all of their achievements, and, I mean, it was just amazing to see, and like, the plays, obviously, like, there's so much going on right now, and the kids are joining it and being part of everything. And I think it's really great, when we talk about the outreach part, that's another piece of it too. And hopefully some of the other pieces with the, you know, different families getting more involved and parents being more involved are starting to come along too. But I think it's just amazing to see the variations in the kids that are joining the different, you know, things that we have available in the district right now. And thank you, Earl, for your presentation.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Schwartz.
I'm all talked out.
All right. Miss LaFrenia?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, I just have two updates, the Williams Rockwell Educational Gift Fund did award eighty, just under $83,000 this year for grants for different projects across the school. Those award letters have been put out, and there's a list on the city's Facebook and website of what those awards are. Everything from a tuba for the high school concert band, a laser cutter for the Gardner Academy, a comfort dog for Gardner Elementary School with Melissa Henry, art boards, field trips to nature's classroom and the theater at the mount, there's, there's a lot that's there. So take a look at those, I'm really looking forward to seeing how they benefit the school in the long run. And Mrs. Pellet mentioned this, but I thought it was worth reading what our athletic director, Dan Fort, posted yesterday, because I thought it really hit home on, I'm normally the music guy, but I got to be the sports guy today, so it's. Today, our varsity cheer team competed at states, and we officially closed the books in our winter season. Since we broke camp the Monday following Thanksgiving, over 200 student athletes, another huge number for us, found a way to leave their mark on our school community. Of the 200 athletes, 98 of them maintained their academic standing throughout the duration of the winter season. We were also, once again, highly decorated with seven academic league all-stars, 22 individual league all-stars, five Central Mass regional all-stars, nine state qualifying swim, swim times, two national swim qualifiers, 14 state qualifying indoor track times, one national indoor track qualifier, one league championship team, and four state playoff qualifying teams. Finally, we had the opportunity to celebrate 26 seniors on their senior nights and thank them for their time with us. Great job to all our student athletes, coaches, parents, boosters, and the community for all you have accomplished this winter, looking forward to the spring. And I think that says a lot about the great work that our coaches and everyone's just doing with our student athletes, because that's a very impressive number, and I was very impressed with that. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Senator Pellet, second by Mr. LaFrenia to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If it was nay, motion carries. Thank you all, see you next month, Happy St. Patrick's Day.